Well, I had a trip. It was Saturday night. It was about that night. And I don't know. I was calling. It's like the park. It's like I got them all. So we're kind of going to move. Um. Hello, Mark. Yeah, that was. 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 I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is a work session. So there'll be no comments. We're going to work first on the private cemetery burial plot, the suggested ordinance, and then if we desire and have the time, we might take up solar. Please announce your presence, starting with you, Chris.
Chris Abernathy.
Dick Lake.
Officer Whitman.
Luke Kennedy.
Bob Helles.
Andrew Schmidt.
Robert Bowen.
We have a floor. There are no minutes of the meeting. That would be at the regular public meeting. I think we've been through this before. Does anyone have a conflict of interest? Well, I think it's time then that we discuss the private cemetery burial plot ordinance There were some changes. I did this. There were some changes because the law changed, and I cited the new laws. I don't know. Did you send them copies of those statutes?
The new statutes, did I? He didn't receive them. Would you like to see them?
I made those available if anyone would like to see them. I'm comfortable they are the applicable statutes.
That one. This, the House of Representatives.
That's it? Yeah.
We didn't receive it.
Okay.
Would you like me to fill that one? Do you have any questions about it?
Really isn't a major change from the old other ordinance except for broadening the class of people that can be buried in the cemetery. It does expand that to allow others than immediate family. And the last part, for other private reasons, leaves it pretty well wide open.
So who determines other private reasons?
I assume the landlord. This, what those ordinance would essentially do is allow any landowner to make burial space available to anyone that he or she saw fit.
Just for everyone's benefit, the particular subsection that Mr. Lake has imposed, I'm just going to read the first section that speaks to that point. Bodies may be, bodies, bodies plural, may be buried in a private cemetery, burial plot determined by the owner of the private cemetery slash burial plot, and may be related by marriage, adoption, friendship, or other private reasons. Just like stated, which should be no purchase or thing required for allowed to be buried in a private cemetery slash burial plot, and some other conditions. Thank you for coming, my friend. It's difficult to do that in just a few minutes on a regular meeting.
That's why I thought it would help to have something to start with.
I don't know what else you, what else would the person put in?
I'm trying to read.
I mean, that pretty much covers everything.
Okay, then it's next to read and publish it and then have a public hearing?
Yeah.
Is that what it will be next?
Yeah. So I missed the deadline for the regular March or February meeting. So if we wanted to do it in February, it would be the next week.
Okay.
Or you could wait till March to hear the regular meeting, depending on what you guys want to do.
What's the board?
Also depending on how many work sessions you're wanting to do. So, keep that in mind.
Was it this going to be a regular, not a workshop?
Right.
Are there any, are there any applications that they make to your office?
No.
For that cemetery's?
Not yet. Nothing happening.
I have a job discussing the marching into the hall of glory period of this.
I think we're going to have enough work sessions and extra meetings to.
There'll be an official action on that beginning soon. That's what I thought.
Yeah, there won't be any official action in this meeting at all.
Well, then I'd suggest we move on, thinking about solar. I've read everything that's been submitted, but I haven't had the chance to compare it with the proposed ordinance. And I'd like a little more time myself to put together the ordinance as submitted to us by the county commission and the suggestions so we can look at them together. I think that's, personally, I think that's the best way to approach it. That's how I try to approach things. I just didn't have time to get that done. I'm sorry. I just didn't have time. So if anybody wants to discuss solar, I'm more than willing to stay and discuss it. I haven't got a mind.
More sessions than you guys want to schedule, a number of them. I've put some of the dates that the county council will be available. You just want to take those into consideration.
Can you raise your hand if you want?
My, one, I have one concern, comment on requesting that the county council be at our work sessions because we have to pay him to come, and if we don't have anything for him, that's always.
I don't think we need it.
I would say we compile a list of questions if we have them, and then schedule me to work in a ten so that we're not paying him just to sit here for nothing.
I was county council all the time. I was county attorney, so I'm somewhat familiar with that. I have no reason to. I think that's a great idea. So when are our next, when can we next have a work session?
Well, the regular meeting would be on 13th of February, so you could have it at that time.
Okay. I think, yeah, I think I can get something together on that. I did my best.
Yeah, on the 13th, you could, you could conduct some business, like approving minutes from the previous meeting if zoning change.
Yeah.
And make work session.
Okay. That worked for everybody?
Have you received many of the solar input forms?
Yes.
Have you received, we didn't get?
We got the ones that were received prior to the 13th, but I'm sure you have more.
I do have some more.
Oh, do you?
Yeah.
Oh, please get those too.
Oh, yeah, the next, by the next one, yeah.
Which after your appointment, closer to time.
I'm sticking with my 10-day beforehand.
I don't feel that it's your responsibility to do all of it. I mean, it's our responsibility to go through those one. When we get those, we do our homework on those.
And I'm really doing it for myself. That's the way I'm, that's the way I've always approached things. Old habits die hard. Thank you.
I appreciate that, but I don't feel that it's your responsibility to do all of that.
Thank you. I don't know if that always will, but I think it's important for those one, this is a, this is a major consideration.
The one thing that I noticed, that when we're normally amending regulations, that we have it formatted like it will actually fit into our zoning regulations, this is formatted as a resolution. So do you want it formatted like it would just go right into those regulations if they get adopted? Or do you want to keep it in this format? Does that make sense what I'm saying?
Well, that's how the county commissioners submitted.
But it doesn't mean that that's how we have to format it when you guys are talking about amending regulations.
Okay. Because this one is not about resolutions. That's what county commissioners.
So essentially what it would be is all of this right here. I can start right here at Article 30. Okay, go down, and I can format it like the rest of the zoning regs are formatted. Does that make sense?
Please, yeah. Please do that.
And, and also on Article 30, if you would want to keep all of this in Article 30, or if you want an addendum or something, because Article 30 in our rights right now is just one page, so this would add another 30 pages, which would affect the rest of the zoning regulation, page numberings, which means a good portion of your book is going to be renumbered and table contents will be redone and all that, so. Or do you like this format where it's all just right there, Article 30?
What's your wrap of the day?
I kind of feel like having an addendum.
Good.
Works better.
All right.
I don't know if you guys think that.
You don't have to change everything.
Right. Change the entire, rest of the formatting, which it's not a big deal, it's just a page numbering thing, so.
One thing that I think is important is that if you do the addendum, county does the addendum, let everything be, you know, and then not have to refer. Here's part of it, and we go several pages, skip several pages, and then we can, all of you get a, use it.
You guys want to go around?
I just have one comment on this. It is, it's my understanding, right, that adoption of this draft resolution is not an approval of solar. Okay? Then comes people with special needs or, that's the way I understand it.
Thanks for having me.
Another general thing that I had is in here is talking about the special use permit. To me, it's more of a conditional use permit. Because all of our special uses are, you know, it fits in line with that zoning district. And yeah, you may have some stipulations on a special use permit, but to me, a conditional use permit is more restrictive. It's got more conditions on it. And it's conditioned that that use is there, and if something is broken out of that condition, then it's, you know, a bigger deal than not.
Let's go back.
Or you not want to mess with conditional use.
I think, I think that's a better idea myself.
To differentiate between the two.
Yeah, because I do think that the purpose on special use doesn't fit this application.
Because there are a lot of conditions.
With that, the conditional use, there are certain due processes that are followed under a zoning change. Does this conditional use permit still follow those? I mean, is that moving some of those processes? I mean, as far as the.
I think there are, there's more process for conditional uses. More things have to be presented to the commissioners or the lighting commissioner.
Versus the zoning change?
Versus the justice zoning change.
Is there anything on this that we can work through? That we can work through without? The first couple pages, I don't think really had any effect on the public commentary that we received. And do we need to spend the time that we're here and start reading through it and see if we have discrepancies or just wait? I mean, I'm just throwing it out there. We're here, and how much other do we need to discuss?
I think there's several ways that if anybody could proceed, if they have a little bit of time, maybe start tonight, is if they go through each page. But if we do it that way, I would hope that the planning boards will be willing to go back, you know, for example, talk about page one tonight, and then someone who will receive feedback from the public, or one of us has an idea, okay, has some additional information. And once we could reach page five tonight, and if we come back to that, and we're able to come back to the evidence closed, without feedback for those other pages.
Yeah, we think.
Well, we couldn't do that in a public meeting, we'd have to have the higher ordinance and manual discussing.
Oh, I'm sure by the time we get to page 35, there's going to be something on page two.
Maybe. It's going to allow for that.
So if we do change it to the conditional use permit, you basically have to go through and change it everywhere here, right?
Yeah, it's not going to actually just switch it up.
Do you want, like, is that, do you want to update that? Like, we have it for the next work session with the updated, is that what you're going to do? Just so we're all getting off what it's actually going to be?
I mean, some of the county commissioners have not made any further proposed changes to the proposed regulations since the 12/26/24 version seven was provided to this.
So have it. Been any additional?
The board of county commissioners has not made any further.
No.
Regulation changes. I don't think we have any.
Not that I have been given.
Then, I guess probably everyone here knows that there have been lawsuits filed by some random, against various federal agencies and the county commissioners regarding the solar project. I want to, probably be in peak paper tomorrow. Or you're, you're around, I'm sure.
It's one of those you hear from the grid line.
Pardon?
I said it's one of those you hear from the grid line.
There have been some lawsuits filed recently, but they didn't involve solar.
Yeah, there was one regarding solar, it was one in Mississippi.
Well, there was one regarding solar where a employee was, or a member of this board was terminated because the ordinance was changed from when, when they have solar. That lawsuit was just on. But that still wouldn't affect us.
My question was whether anything we do has to be, those lawsuits have to be resolved before we make suggestions, the recommendations to the county commission.
No.
But yes, there was a lawsuit filed, Mr. Hall, and a couple of other people, and three other people come to view, get area. I was kind of going to talk to you. But.
My understanding, the work is going through and writing regulations that any solar company would have to follow.
That's correct.
In order to apply for it.
Yeah.
So none of that.
I don't think that's a matter that's written before the board. I don't think that's a matter that needs to be before the board.
I don't know. I just, if any effect, it would be resolved before we made our recommendation to the county commission or not.
They have a challenge, our right to make that, make that recommendation.
No, the county commission will not mention that ever, if you can't.
And I don't know if that would stop us either. For an independent body working on a particular ordinance. I suppose if they really thought they wanted to stop this body, they'd have to find an injunction, and then the court would decide whether or not we have the ability to go
Mr. Chairman, something that we, we want to consider, and this is partly because of ten-day lead period that the public comment forms are required to be provided in order for this, I have time to consider them, ask any, county, if there is to ask any questions with any council that needs to be asked. But I don't know if we can, at this point, we don't know. I'm wondering if you want to go ahead tonight and set up some additional work sessions. Besides just the one on the second Thursday of March, just to allow those time periods to already be somewhat preset, at least for a little ways out, and maybe set, maybe set one more work session.
I think that's a good idea.
After the March one, you could set a second one, and if it was canceled. And while those canceled...
If February.
February.
Yeah. That way there's... People have more knowledge in advance.
I might have more criteria to...
Twenty-seven? Twenty-seven to February? Twenty.
Right. You're suggesting twenty-seven.
I'm suggesting twenty-seven. Sure. Can we all make the twenty-seven?
No, I'll get you a calendar email.
It's February thirteenth, it's at seven PM. We need to the same seven PM with Stan. I guess it's about six, seven PM on the thirteenth. It's Stan. Yeah, they need to find that's all. That's all we want for this one. If you have, if you have twice a week on twenty-seven, maybe five.
It's six.
Six is a bit of time to go to the board.
Anybody uncomfortable with the twenty-seven and six? Yeah, why don't you schedule that?
Want me to go on March? Want me to go on March?
Yeah, whatever.
Or do we just want to do another work session on a regular meeting? Are they scheduled long?
That one will probably be the funeral.
Cemetery.
After the funeral. So the cemetery and burial plot. So I don't know if you guys can set up a work session after that. There's also very likely the potential of another zoning change or something before that too. So if you do a work session after that, it could be busy.
We want to be March twenty-seventh, then?
Yeah, the potential on a regular meeting, and I don't foresee it, but they deal with it.
Six o'clock?
And may I have a problem with the March twenty-seventh, six?
See, I would give all of those.
Do you say April, do you want April, or just wait?
I'd say wait. The rate we're going, it's gonna be...
Too late, too long. What is the commission expecting, something from us regarding solar?
They shouldn't hurry us, they got their time. In their place. Yeah. I think, I think they'd like it sort of they got it fast. I think we just go by, they'll get it when we're ready.
I don't, I don't think they're willing, they're probably not willing to wait as long as... They won't give us as much time as they take to plan to set that up.
They don't set our schedule, we do.
That's what's good.
And they'll get it when we're comfortable.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
And I'll be happy to tell them.
Do you want to go through the little letters or...
Why do you want to do?
I'd like to go through some of them.
Yes.
We start out. If nothing else to get people for where we're at, some of the things. Know how to change, I mean. So we've all read them?
I've got a little sheet here that I don't think was put into this resolution format. But it could be helpful probably in the actual cadentum. Absolutely.
That's better than the picture I drew in my head.
There was also a spreadsheet that Lee started and Todd took over that has all the various counties with what their setbacks are. And so it's a quick glance at what other counties are putting. I've started a spreadsheet on that. Started it today, so it's, it's still pretty rough. And I don't have all the counties under there yet. I'll try and find that while you guys are working on this one.
In my opinion, paragraph one, commission findings. I mean, according to the comprehensive plan, what's written for this county. We're, you have to stretch pretty hard to find a place for solar in the comprehensive plan. Gatorade in favor of primary soil preservation and ownership of the event.
There is a map in the comprehensive plan that has the waterways in it. Which would be important to reference. That brings everything that would be upper areas or setbacks or... To me, those are sensitive waterway areas. Tell them sensitive habitat areas too, and now when they're on sensitive habitat areas. Maybe found a type A. Just says maybe thirty-one dash two for the comprehensive plan, or maybe it should be thirty-one and thirty-two.
Bullet two, bullet two. I have a concern preservation of primed ag soils and impact on cultural and historical or archaeological features. And this, the western edge of Jackson County is the eastern edge to Flint Hills. And I see a need to protect the native ranchland that's part of my list. The western edge of Jackson County is the eastern edge of the Flint Hills region in Kansas. So this proposed site is in Flint Hills region. And it is, my opinion, that that's should, that's culturally sensitive. Ranchland. And deserves protection.
Is any of that original?
Some of it would be virgin native.
Is it?
Some of it is improved. Improved grassland, by meaning it's been torn up. Any of the farms or reverted back to grass, but...
Because there was a place right on the south end. Can't remember the name of the owner, and I know it was native. And they put something through it. She tried to get him to change, she even offered the paint. To have it moved north, and they wouldn't do it with the right to their land. And I don't think it's native. That's the only one I knew was true.
There's, there's a large, I don't know the total percentage because I haven't seen each property that's even included. And that's not where we're at yet, in my opinion, all this. This is a, you know, a broad overall, because it could, the next one could be in eastern Jackson County. But it is my opinion that we cannot replace virgin native ranchland. And we shouldn't care enough.
So can we get a map? See which land is and isn't?
But I think we'll get that when it comes to the zoning, the conditional use permit. This is a broad...
Your statement just in general?
Yeah, this, I mean, this is gonna have to be a broad, general term. Because if we said, well, it can't happen over there, then they could turn around and say, well, you didn't say it couldn't happen over here. So this has to be a broad term for Jackson County. What we will and will not allow to be built. Then, once this is resolved, then they could come forward and apply that conditional use to these standards. And then we could say, does that fall into this category or does it not? That's the way I see it.
So you would want, in seeing preservation of native?
Yeah.
In seeing?
It kind of falls into both of them. I feel that Flint Hills is cultural and historical, but it's also preservation of primed ag soils. Now, primed ag soils could be described as bottom farmland, very hotly productive, or that type of thing. So, I mean, I don't know where it needs to go, I'm just opening this up for discussion. This is one of the things that is high on my priority list, because that's my logic.
Need a, maybe a list of those areas. Certain waterways.
Well, and I don't, I mean, I don't know that Jackson County is necessarily delineated as part of the Flint Hills. I'm just saying that in our comprehensive plan, we were described that we want to protect it. Probably.
I guess I, the problem I have is, and I understand what you're saying. But how can you tell landowner where he can, where he can't do with his own land? To me, bought it. I mean, that's, that's the only, that's the biggest problem I have with the whole thing. How can you tell somebody they can't do something with their land that they bought and paid for? Now they decided, I mean, if they wanted to come out and build walls of fun out of my place, I probably wouldn't want it. But if they condemned it and decided to put it in, what am I gonna do? But, I mean, or if I wanted to have it in, and everybody else didn't want it, I don't know. I mean, that's, that's the problem I have is, you know, I worked hard to get my ground. And whatever I want to do with it, I'd be able to do with it. So I don't know, I...
I don't.
I understand what you're saying.
I don't, and I don't disagree with that. That's where I struck, is private property rights. However, Jackson County is zoned, and we do have a comprehensive plan. And if we have to determine other private property rights outweigh the benefit to the public for my first. And I'm just saying what I...
I understand.
What my, my...
I know. But I agree with you too.
There's plenty more I've got in here. That's where it's based on, you know, is...
I understand, I understand, I...
Yeah, I'm in a tough spot, I'm trying to decide. Private property rights versus... And I don't understand, cease and balance private property rights and community rights.
We're just making the correction here that the two Ys don't really pay.
Do you have some suggestive language you prefer?
No, I think it's in there.
Okay.
I think that it's in there. I'm just saying that that's what I'm, that's how I'm interpreting it.
Okay.
Because you can't, you can't specifically list the native grassland and that's part of the county when it doesn't affect the eastern side or the northern side. So it's, I think it falls into the preservation of primed ag soil and the impact on cultural and historical factors. That I'm saying, I feel native grassland is part of that. So I think it's already, it's already, the verbiage is already there, it's just how we're interpreting it. And I'm just letting you know where I'm at, that's all. At some point, we're gonna have to, you know, discuss and discuss these points. And figure out whether that's what we want to say. There's a lot of stuff here. Now, in H, in their impact on joint landowners. If they're holding environmentally sensitive, I mean, even if you allowed it on improved grain size or improved in a farm. But the neighbor has native grassland. And solar is allowed on right next door. And a tornado comes through and blows all of this stuff over into neighboring properties. How do you ever clean that up? You have to go in and take the soil and clean all the little grass racks. So then they don't have the opportunity to have that historically protected.
Can you also make that argument, everybody's got solar on their house, dwell though?
Yeah, but it's, and I've got solar at my house. You could, it's almost a lot smaller shape. I mean... The likelihood of my panels getting hit by a tornado would kind of tear up so much else with it. But if you put five thousand acres, which is proposed, not a miss, but either way. If you put those up there, the likelihood of them getting hit by something is a lot greater. I think the cleanup would be untravable. Just minus twenty-two panels blow away, it's not gonna take out a whole quarter of the cross river. Take out 100 feet wide straight. We have, we're changing the degree in which ag uses environmental protection wildlife habitat is tolerated. Later on, it talks in here about what to put underneath the panels for vegetation. And it talks about native grasses as well. These do come with a fire risk. And if we put native grass, allow native grassland underneath them. Any kind of dry grass come August, September, we've got huge wildfires. Just highlighting several points in this that we've got to...
You probably do have control of that.
And you're talking about product that's intended on catching the sun rays. Any small spark? Great problems. With that, with these regulations, I see that you have protections in place for those kind of...
So would you suggest maybe a fire break? Maybe get a place like that in the southwest hands where it's the law. And buy all that grass and...
My only suggestion would be, the only remedy I would see would be a cool season grass that doesn't carry the fire risk. I'm not even there yet, you know?
Yeah.
I'm highlighting the reasons that it should be allowed. But I think there is ways around it. Cool season grass, it's kept a shorter, better data state. But if we put six foot tall native grass out there, it's gonna be a mess.
Yeah, area runs probably.
Yeah.
And that's true, you know, the cool season grass is not burned because it has definitely...
They, they do, and they will.
I had that personal experience with that.
The risk is reduced.
Yeah, it can't be put out with water either. The fire department found that out.
They just...
And we put out foam. And there are a few, yeah, some of them are part of the foam equipment. The policy plan has said, keep the protective plan around the urban rules that can be talked about in the county or by the cities through annotations. And as far as those that cannot be protected, the city may not be allowed. Other considerations.
Do you guys have your question here? So, go to Article seven. Section one, or excuse me, section three.
One, seven, I guess. Page one, good night.
Page nineteen. Normal use, a bit ten. And then go down a little bit, special use. Some, some station. P, I'm running. Let's see. I'm directing you there because I think that might be one of those.
That those sort of things are allowed under the...
The article, yeah, the number ten, that's like regular use. That would require any sort of rezoning or anything. But then P is under special use prevent.
And so with, with that change to a conditional use, does the special use rules there completely? And do we have rules for conditionals or is that what we're writing?
That's kind of what we're writing. But I don't know how that's gonna play into this. But just that was a special use under A one. Just something I thought about.
I didn't see anything with definitions. Does anybody understand what project area, project extent, and the site area? I mean, that's not what this was.
But that necessarily doesn't mean that's where it's going to be, does it? I mean, do these two go hand in hand? They don't? I mean, as far as what, I mean, if we do this and it doesn't pass there, then they could move east and go somewhere else, right?
Well, I think this whole diagram is just to kind of give you an idea that it's the extent and then the project area and then the array assembling inside that project area. Just to show you the boundaries and how the boundaries are.
That's not a map of anything.
It's the same example of those two types, the definition of those two types.
Yeah, that's, just showing you, so you can understand the extent and the area inside it. Because it says later in the regs that the area can't be more than 70% of the estate. Area is 70% of the estate. So that, like that? Yeah.
And also say a couple of 2,000 acres or something.
Per, per project, that's what.
Yeah, I had a question on that too. That was, I didn't see any fair numbers in there on total extent, like total county.
I mean, for some, you see that CCS, whatever, you know, a lot, right? I have a question on the limited scale solar energy, LSCCS. It's more of a private system, doesn't exceed 20 acres. At the last electricity grid is for consumption of members in the group and not for transfer or sale. So does that, except for the allowance in that meter? So I, I think that that means that you can hook it back up to the grid and sell it to the grid. As, as it is with my private system. If I overproduce, it goes back on the grid. So in that, that limited scale, could you put up 20 acres of panel privately? And sell it back to the grid? Or is that verbiage? I mean, if the consumption of members in the group? Or is it, I mean, it's acceptable to go back in that meter?
So I understood it like the personal private, that would be a homeowner or farmer wanting to pair up some panels for some apartments or lots. So limited scale, I thought was more like a cooperative area or space. Would it be outside the city limit? Or like outside the city limit, it's a city, but outside the city limits where they're not regulating it, but they can be, and they're not willing to annex.
It doesn't, nothing said about that. I mean, it says, it's typically created by people going together to make a co-op. But is that saying that the three of us are neighbors and we can get together and put them on 20 acres of my land and then sell it back to the grid? In my opinion, I see, I see that as something that I would accept in this county. I don't know about the large scale commercial type, but the small scale, if you could sell it back to the power company and then you're making the money on it and the power company gets to sell it back to the other people around it. Those in the grid will come back. So... I see that as a more beneficial aspect of this plan than C. So I just want to make sure that that's clearly unders, I mean, or written clearly in that that has a few viable options.
And that might be a question for the county attorney, I don't have clarification on that. And I had some of the same questions related to, you know, is it got to where? I'm not entirely certain, I don't represent the county as a legal advisor. The way I read it is, yes, you know, three or four, how many people that are neighbors that would be cautious. But what about, you know, our local co-ops? Much of the county is served by local co-ops. Do they have the option of proposing a project under the LSCC? Or the commercial scale, you want? I'm assuming that they would, always on the signs and the labels.
Yeah.
We might say this because we come up with the idea, we think, if we're comfortable and then somehow it's a different hit. I'd rather see S comfortable, so like, rather than go to Todd Todd and Mayor, Mayor maybe not be happy with what he gives. Might work, might think about working with Mike.
Yeah, I'm just saying that there, there are probably several pieces of property in Jackson County that they'll either grow good houses or they grow weeds. You know, and, and you're limiting it to 20 acres or we can make that smaller or whatever. I mean, I think 20, 20 did. But it's one of the things, I mean, mostly everybody talks, we're like, we're all thinking on the commercial scale and this could get forgotten. We need to make sure that that's addressed.
Sure.
Whether or not we want it or not. The main thing is that bad power states here, that's creating here in the space.
There are a number of local co-ops around the state, not a whole lot, but a few that have small scale. Kind of what B is describing. Some of them though are more than 20 acres. They're not large comparatively. Somewhere under 50 to 90, I'm not suggesting, you know, just the 20 acres or something else.
Right.
Which obviously then falls under the C.
Right. Any, yeah, anything over the farm would...
This is the only one that I noticed that actually had any acre amounts on it. Probably add more limiting factors or something than the other ones that are more clearly defined.
So do you want to put a C, 20 acres? I don't know, it says it back in, something like that.
I personally, on C, which means responsibility, but I think we should put it. I don't know how many CS and CSs would be allowed to get to be from, you know, to like, I mean... So not one or more, I guess.
I don't know, very deep, you know, deep, probably.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, that, that's, we need to cap on that.
Sure. Don't say 240, that's more than, it'd be bad.
Yeah, then we get back to the landlord. My neighbor has one, I think it's a good idea because I can't have one unless it's the number of...
Right.
Get back to that landlord fights. How much, how much do we step on the landlord?
And the landlord originally doesn't want it. But the neighbor puts it on, but he got rid of the shadow, but he's like, I'm not gonna pay the money, I'm gonna...
That's a tough decision.
I think there's a difference between utility scale and putting a limit on that, many acres versus like a limited scale solar energy. Because those are definitely gonna be smaller little patches. Where do you want to put a limit on, on those as well?
Well, and I guess with that terminology, with commercial utility scale, is the utility fall under the micro company? You know, and in a limited scale, that's a, people that join together to make a co-op. But in the utility scale, that's already, is utility describing brown ashes or evergreen? Or, I mean, if evergreen wanted to come to Jackson County, but in a limited scale, well, they'd have to fall under utility scale because they're already classified, is that, and that's what I'm asking.
That's probably why it says residential or utilities.
Could be another one of the interpretations from the county council. Whether that definition goes by the acre, or goes by the, the owner of the system.
Right.
And that's just, it would be a utility.
They're allowed public utilities. I think most of the rest of this graph holds, I mean, it's describing the commercial. So I think a lot of that stuff will come in later, maybe. Section two, the impact on wildlife, wildlife habitat, do we require any studies on the impacts or? I'm sure that there's none, but not specifically for our location. But are we, are we requiring it?
Do we have any native species? I don't, first I don't feel from doing, does the county or not?
Uh, would you?
Maybe we protect it anyway.
There, what, where is it, the non-sensitive habitat areas? We do have sensitive habitat areas in Jackson County. So they may not fall into the scope of this current project, but that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about power regulation. So, yeah, I, we do need to have, you know, studies done on affecting those sensitive areas.
We, we, we help them, you know, lots of the wildlife and, and, uh, all of them, and they, that, so, uh.
We'll quickly track with that, whoever's the applicant, wants to conduct those studies.
Yes, that's what I'm suggesting, we put in the regulations that that requires.
I think somewhere like in, uh, page 16, there are, there are requirements when they apply that, uh,
I can use all of them.
They would have to supply some things, one of them is a site plan, um, what was the other one? So the site plan is on 16. There's a, uh, operations plan would be another requirement.
Can we add to that?
Okay, so on, on page seven, I don't know if you want us to wait or if you want us to jump it out real quick, but during the application process, those are the things that they, they want, uh, with the application. So A is a detailed description of the overall project. And as I was reading through this, I think under A, it should be a site plan, operations plan, grading plan, you know, the different plans that are going to be required. Should, should be detailed right there. So it's very clear that this is what is required during application. And there was something else, I think, about habitat further on, so I think that was definitely required.
On page nine, um, six, C, there was mention of, uh, vegetation, vegetation management, whatever the data plan.
So that would be, uh, maybe no list of all of those plans that are required and, and making it very clear under A, like, this is what we need, that's gonna, that would help me too in that process when there are anyone bringing in all this stuff that I know that I'm.
That's the first thing you get, is a detailed list of.
Yeah, and like a checklist too.
It's all in one place, that doesn't have to scatter.
Right, randomly through this, thirty some pages of, you know. So anytime, any of you see a plant that's on the score, highlight it, underline it, whatever, so we can have that list of all those various points.
There'd be no saying there, but a study, I mean, I'd like to understand, and G is playing wildlife role as well. How do you know when wildlife role without having studied, very qualified, you know, Ross is a guardian. There's no really, really, or is it lost that out?
If we don't know how many deer or turkey are there, and then ten years later, we say, well, there's none here, well, what, were they here to stop us or did the panels drop off?
And who's conducting the study? To me, that's, that's important too, right?
No, that doesn't take.
Well, the applicant would pay for it, but then we get a pick through that U, I mean, because if they have a plan, you know, a study or on site, and they say, well, they're done, you know, do we, do we need to have recommendations for?
Look, if we just, I mean, have a wildlife model just that, you know, lives in town, I mean, you know, and works in this is his area, can we say it's explicitly that has?
Consultation with the, with the county representative.
The state, or the state, right, right.
But the one, yeah, the one that's assigned to this county, so he knows that area.
Right.
No, I'm glad you brought it up.
And that was under what?
Well, yeah, I I guess I don't want to jump too far ahead and then we're getting, you know, I'm, you know, just highlighting things we need to approach and then when we come to it, maybe we'll know. But there, you know, all of those points there are kind of lists of the studies that need to be completed. The wildlife studies, preservation of some, ag soils and impact on cultural features. Impact on water quality and soil growth, and that's going to study grainy effects. Those regulations are saying, well, we need to consider these, but we're going to ask for studies that help us consider them.
We need to have some, we need to, yeah, to see.
So which one do you think, C, the, it's definitely a study, some determination.
Yeah. And I don't know how this all comes back, but on C, you can work with the NRCS, the conservation districts. On, you know, but that's, that's going to be addressed later in the site ratings, but they would be able to say what types of soils, and if we put regulations on what types of soils are able to be used. There could be consultations with them, or if they're involved. They would have, they would be involved in that and for the waters in the districts. That was on. And obviously, I say in the water district.
C or B?
C. I think probably the same one, F, I mean, we need to, don't issue with any bridges that we're having put any, maybe a wall, we're probably need to be inspected before.
Have a, a bridge.
How are we studying?
That's going to have to fall under a bridge inspection.
Yeah, it's going, ready, here, here. I don't know, I don't know the state. I, I, I'm taking it for a part, I'm a, I'm just a county admin engineer to inspect bridges and.
I don't know what they have.
So.
I don't think there's not one on cable. Now. Is there any study, score, is there? Let's do the, let's go up on the site stuff.
I would say most of what A would consider historic or would be buildings, and solar projects should affect. It's, you know, A would need to tear down, but they could, if there's an old rock house on the place and they say, well, it's not functional, it's buried down, but panels there, but it's historic and protected by it.
Probably would require the, the, they couldn't be allowed to apply to that presentation.
If they don't want it, okay.
They're not, they're not.
Right. Yeah, if it's already protected, they would know about it, somebody would know about it, but yet if they don't ask, the landlord.
I don't know, Huber Ranch, still standing, kind of by Rosco. With those white, it's a version of the water. Isn't that what it's, you know, five thousand acres, Ranchland, who Chicago. Did have those painted on the walls, these black ones. And the one that, I think it's already fallen down, the one with Copetera, moving. Yeah, it's shafted up, you remember Vegas? Yeah, 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 it's gone, I think it was falling on itself.
Still there, so it's, I'm like, um.
I've been, I'm going to get on the story, but it used to be a nice just off. And, uh, they finally tore it down. I'm walking out, remember that? It's in the alley behind my, my, yeah. And there, there's a.
So just moving forward here on number two of the U. Earlier in the requirements for special use, it lists limited scale as well as commercial utility. And in two, it does not list limited scale.
This one?
It did in version number. Right. One of those needs to be changed, we either have it here or both places are needed, like, you know, where I'm at. In section two, one, the purpose and intent of regulations, if, the purpose of this section was to provide details for limited scale or commercial scale. But then when they go to two B, it says these regulations apply to commercial and it doesn't list limited scale. So.
I don't know, that's what I found, I confused them, whether the regulations apply to one or both, or they, they apply to one, or they apply to both.
And.
So from the file of the section that, you know, that, those, I mean, that, those are everywhere.
And that, we would need limited scale to, to follow setbacks, locations from neighbors.
The study is just the site.
Yeah. So that, I mean, that's one of the few places that I saw a limited scale in this graph, so.
So right in here, we're going to need a limited scale.
Either that or put with the applied to limited scale in.
There's also the possibility that limited, that we would hold limited to a different standard.
But if you have them, then on the files, this section, it's.
But if you have them on the title of this section, it is just the same commercial.
They have to get a, apply for a special use or, or conditional use to do a limited scale, so then we would have to regulate, so we want separate set of regulations for limited or.
To, to me, they should both follow the same. For instance, like on B there, you know, and so you use a battery, a battery interview storage system or similar storage system to distribute it for, for a head unit. Well, if we don't have it listed in both limited and commercial, or wherever they can, could they say, well, we can put a battery in for unlimited, you know?
And there's one other point in here, and I saw it, but I wasn't sure where the batteries came in. But it lists batteries as acceptable. Um, under commercial, under the definitions of commercial utility, the system's connected to transmission, electric, power lines, and your battery storage. So it's in the definition, but over here we say it's not allowed.
Yeah, just by definition, it's in there. So battery storage on a personal level or friend level, right? Is people to have without a rest or whatever.
But they wouldn't have to apply for. Is that?
You always want to.
Is that, you're confusing, it says batteries are not allowed, but yet it would be under date.
Well, he said the standards do not apply to personal or accessory. So everything below that doesn't matter to the personal. I wanted to see if they're out, ten on B, ten quarter.
I think so, that's the way it's listed.
Yeah, I think anywhere where it says, where it's, especially when it's listed in the title, and then any more commercial, anywhere where it says, it needs to say limited.
And then, so it's one of your certain fines, but anywhere the, the C, whatever it is, the CSCCS would also have to include LSCCS.
Someone was trying to question right, is there any, number one, best described? And granted, a permit that's not best priced in current standards, or? What does that mean?
Just by, if these regulations exist, it doesn't mean that somebody automatically gets planned the wrong way, is that?
I, I'm only returning with the way, I'm, one way. Is what that may be saying is that just because someone came in under the current standards. That doesn't mean that down the road, of course, uh, the standards the county imposes will change. There's no grand, there's no, yeah, no grandfather. That may be, that may be.
I would say that's one way of clarification, I'm trying to go.
I need for the sensitive regulations to change. They'll have to change before the regulation, that's what it says. You can't come in and say, no, you already said I can do it this way.
Five years to comply.
All right, what I need to.
So if these is a top, or grading, a sole, or graded, and grading departments and all that, I would say that means like, you know, about half the fire department study and all that, and if starts coming, that they want to change stuff, you have to comply, you can't say no, I'm done.
I did it the way you told me, I could have, and well, now we're saying that's not working, you got to see.
So we do want to change that five years.
That's a long time.
That is kind of a long, you might, maybe two.
And it would be dependent on what the situation was, I mean, if it did, yeah, it'll be a gully, and it'll be a river to five years, but there might be something that they take. Five years, huh?
That's not a good one, I'm beginning to find it hard to understand.
Yeah, if you're going to put in a project like this, you better mean, and take care of it. Something needs to be fixed, it needs to be fixed now, not five years.
We, we can change that number, whatever we feel.
There's something to reason why, uh, that, to, to, to suppose.
And that reason, that, if you say, someone, different. I mean, yes, we don't know what that reason was, but I think this is just a graph that they pulled together from several other different projects or whatever.
And we don't have to know their reasons, we didn't argue.
Right, we said that five years is too long.
We think three years are more reasonable, and we put three in, that's the thing.
I'd be fine with two, two is enough.
I'd, I'd be happy with one, and then put, you know, the circumstances allow, and maybe we can change it to, you know, give us a percent of time. But I don't want to just keep dragging the thing out, you don't know how that goes, I mean, just. I mean, I understand, I don't understand everything that is on solar, but, um, I can't get it done in years' time.
Want to put in a year? The board wants to do it?
Yeah, just put a year in.
Put a year.
Would there be any way to award it? A year, does it mean it's not something that's, you know, a dish, you know, four minutes or something? Is there circumstances, I guess, that allows it?
Yeah, or based on, on, you know, petition to the, you know, something like that, particularly petitions to the, to the. I mean, I don't, I don't know the conservation plans, you know, storm on, but I don't know if that's going to change they, those regulations, I mean, you have the ditch forms, that's part of the previous process that someone went wrong. So I, I agree, we don't want to overball, but I think there should be something in there that can apply.
Apply for an extension or.
Or come before this board.
I would suggest on that, the extension application being made for the county's trade, because I'm not seeing that the board has demonstrated, this law not have to deal with, that is every combination of, uh, to do that, and it's ready for through the county.
So in section three, this goes to what Dick would want to do to start with, um, we did have one public comment that I saw, that was specific to state in section three, and I don't have to try real hard to read it. Do you have a better copy?
I don't, I don't mind trying, we are, if the guy previously had been told to have five years to comply. And the county commissioner told him he's only got two years, it could be a problem with it.
But he, he won't know, he's, he'll never be told five years if we send it as.
I don't know if he's been told five years, that's what we're putting aside now, it's two of those, that number should be in the first place, if they're fully quarter hundred, so it's starting.
And logically, you wouldn't definitely be changing that unless it was really necessary.
Yeah, correct.
This is always applied, I think, to some.
Uh, it was Gordon, John, he had three of them. Since this, he had section four, section five, and section three. Uh, section three subsection four. There are no, no restrictions on the amount of solar panels that can be placed on solar land. There needs to be a limit in the form of generation capacity per day, kilowatts or megawatts per day. Subsection, or section three subsection eight, all of the setbacks are too small, solar installation needs to be in twelve hundred feet for any residence, and five hundred feet for any community. On a road, county, township, or neighborhood. And then section three subsection fourteen A, integration of food production into the project design is encouraged but not required. There, something needs, it needs to be a land place to show how the land will continue to be used for agricultural purposes, so if this is not required, then this is not an agricultural project. The more comment I've had to that is, I would say that this, that commercial is considered an agricultural.
Oh, there you.
It's easy. I was staring at my little phone.
Sorry.
Yeah, just getting out of my zone.
I'm going to get done with this, I'm going to bring it back up.
Yeah. So it would be, on that, agricultural, like, A, is.
The end of the definition.
Right, yeah, the end, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
So agricultural, a solar energy emergency system that provides for both solar energy collection, compatible agricultural uses, and will use to offer the most common types of agricultural, A, facilities, and food growing crops, providing pollinators, and green vehicles, do agricultural activities, and are going to be, surrounding the meals.
So I don't know where, whether a commercial project is potentially considered agricultural, also, because what I understand agricultural, are there, a lot of them, they put the panels vertically, and they have a front set and a back set. So the side catches this side, and then it catches the other side, and then they graze animals, or graze crops, or whatever in between. Uh, definition, it does say, uh, need, um, but I don't know whether we're classifying commercials as agricultural, or not, whether they have a wire with it, they do that.
Don't believe so, um, again, my interpretation is whether a project equates agricultural take is up to the, uh, the, uh, utility, or whoever the, the company is, that, uh, that, or that, or is the company, or is the group of neighbors to have, have the systems up to them, decide, uh, and design our own project, which may or may not.
But could, could we say that any company that wants to have a CSC, a CS, a CS project with the county, it's wired to be agricultural take?
I think you could say it's hurried.
I mean, I'm sure there are solar companies that are friendly, you know? That's something, you know, we talked about the grass, that, that's something that I personally would like to see is us, if we can double use it or anything, uh, just, I've seen some videos where they were sheep, and the panels, and I, so, yeah, they sat higher, and they were in the double sided, and they were leaning back, and it was possible, but, uh. And to me, you know, worrying about, uh, fire potential or something like that, that, or maybe the, of, in the, in the, in the tall grasses, and stuff like that, so, I, I would be, Dick, or find a new way to begin, uh, incorporate or strongly encourage or require, however, say, to make it as agricultural, and take.
Put a percentage in the project that has to have those standards, that has to be built to those, for, I mean, because most of these commercials, I think, are, if, the, the panels will pivot with the sun, and that's why they say someone's ready to height, and in, after, or after, you know? But you, yeah, and that's a way of limiting scale of some of these, if you put a certain percentage, has to fall within those agricultural take definitions.
Now you're putting conditions on land. Like, uh.
Or land under, yeah, but they're, I, maybe.
He's like, Stella, what, you like?
No, they're, kind of, please, we're, we're required. No, they're under lease, we're, we're required to be permanent.
Well, that affects the landlord's life, he or she may not want to, if she has cattle. Right, yeah, that's putting a condition on the landlord, they, they.
Well, it doesn't have to be great, it could be wildlife pollinators, or, I mean, as, as stated in the definition. I mean, it's. Growing crops, providing for pollinators, raising animals, I mean, there's, yeah, I get, I, I do get what you're saying about. I may not be, I may not be able to be great, but. And I think also, some of those standards coming in later in what they have to go back, that it.
Good for leasing, I mean, for them to put out lease to, you know, raise the, you know, raise the panels. You know, if it were to go to the livestock, you know, out of the agricultural, or whatever, you know.
I mean, I, that's, I'm all for.
Maybe we should put highly recommended, and then go back and put something in the, in the application. Ask for a percentage, how much.
I mean, if you have a percentage in the entire project, you could say twenty percent, or whatever, you probably find something in the, in the, in the whole for, more restrictions, but yeah, I don't know, we could take it.
That would be a curve. Question of whether or not that would impact the valuation of the joint property.
Well, it would have to be in, and I would have to see the study on that, I mean, I have to have the analysis, I don't have properties that sold after this, that system's in.
I mean, it needs some history.
So, I don't know how somebody is going to evaluate until.
I don't really know, I don't believe that.
That's not an uncommon symptom. That's not an uncommon symptom. I don't think that that's, I mean, I think that at some point, we will address. We see that matters, there are red lines, we need to address that.
I don't know how we can. We anticipate changes, or how you can legislate anticipations.
All we can do is approve setbacks and regulations of where those are, to try to minimize the damage. And that, and that also comes into the condition of use for dead, when they apply to that for dead. This body then gets to take that and all, call that into consideration, and approve or deny that for dead. But what we're doing is writing regulations.
I have talked to a few people that were living near solar farms. They're unhappy cameras.
Have their property values gone down?
Have they?
Have their property values gone down?
They have difficulty finding prospective buyers of their property.
Have you listed them?
Have they?
Have they listed the property for sale?
I didn't ask them that particular question. But they are in the opinion that the property is being valued.
And that goes back to the beginning of these. Their waters, I mean, the, the planning commission has to take into consideration the visual impact, and all these other impacts, that. I mean, we have to set these rules the way we want them to happen, but then we still get the opportunity to say, no, that's not gonna work, or yes, that's gonna work. And that's the time that we take those into consideration, whoever's still on this board at that time.
And neighbors have a chance to speak up.
I'm just asking you, if, if we need to consider that at some point.
Absolute, but I don't know how we consider it in a regulation to, to write them, to, the rules that they have to follow, I don't know how we can consider that.
I wouldn't want a hog farm next to me, but I could stop.
You could in the, in the, some changes or whatever, I mean, you can, you can appeal it, or you, or you can oppose it. There is, there is, uh, regulations that go with some changes, I'm assuming the same with the use, that so many neighbors object to, but it has to be okay with.
Well, hog farms and feedlots, that's, yeah, that's, that's more KDHE, if there's violation of, you know, runoff, not this thing.
But our county does have regulations on what, you know, and up to three hundred head feedlot doesn't have to have the same setbacks as a thousand.
Right, but regulated by the state, but as far as the county goes, if it's an A one, it's agricultural use, then.
It's still considered, doesn't need a special use.
Moving on about two hours, four John, or double them.
I'll give that for now, I mean, I think we've talked about a lot of things, and we can go back on and.
We've been.
Come back to the, the, the.
I'm gonna take a motion, juror.
I'm sorry, we need, we're not, we can't even, we need to say goodbye.
See you next time. It'll take a while to get through this over, maybe second Thursday of March.